Good morning. I now call the January 28th, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. And first order of business, I would like to extend a warm Marion County Public Schools welcome to Mr. Greg Davis, who will be working with our wonderful Kevin Christians as a public relations officer. Welcome, sir. Glad to have you on board. Please silence your electronic devices. I now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form and hand it to the school board secretary. After the Board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the secretary will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address, and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout the proceeding. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. And before we roll into the transportation discussion, just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the timeline for today. This is a discussion that will be ongoing, so we will have about an hour this morning to discuss, and then we'll have a brief agenda review, I will, with the rest of the agenda review team, and then we'll be going on to the Mary Sue Rich groundbreaking ceremony. So we do have a full and active morning, and I welcome all of you. Thank you for being here, and I will now turn it over to Dr. Gullett. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. We will get right to it. I would like to begin by just saying we appreciate the opportunity to discuss transportation this morning, and what a critical role transportation plays in the education of our students. Without a full functioning Transportation Department, we have a phenomenal leader here who's leading that work, we would not be able to fully educate the students throughout Marion County. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Ms. Rora, and then she will talk about next steps and what we will share with you this morning. We look forward to your input.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members. This morning, we're going to share with you some of discussions we've been having, and then ask your directions for a few options. I would first start by allowing Mr. Leopard to open us up.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Board Members. Thank you for the opportunity for us to come and discuss some of the concerns you've received as we have, and the Transportation Department has been addressing on a daily basis. Wanted to frame a little bit of that for you to understand. The main concerns that we've been hearing about are late arrival to school campuses, unfulfilled routes that we have, and a high volume of absenteeism. And those are the things that we have been trying to address and continue to address, and we will speak to today. Please understand that the top priority for our Transportation Department is safely delivering students to school on time every day. That is the top priority and the goal. I do want to bring up a few points to remember and challenges that have happened, that many are not brand-new challenges. These have been challenges that have happened for many years in some cases. One of them is a national, a state, and a local issue, and that's filling driver positions. As we had talked a few months ago about custodial, it's the same sort of thing. There's a high turnover rate in those areas, and interested people that go for it, because it does take some other required training for them. But what has made it, even though Becky and the Transportation Department have many avenues to try to Band-Aid those type of concerns that we've had, we're going to address those today. The effects of the pandemic have really made that much more complicated in recent months and in the last year, and we will speak to that a little bit as well today. The exclusions of students, and the exclusions of drivers, and the exclusions of aides and office personnel have made that very complicated, and had to make us even more creative in the way we handle it. Some people deciding to retire as their way of dealing with it. And as far as personal medical, that is always a case with all employees, irregardless of the time of year. I do want you to be aware of a few things, that our Employment Services, HR Department does a great job at when we recommend employees to hire, getting them as quickly as they can to the next stage. But the next stage is the onboarding required by DOT. Those things require, what they come with sometimes is nothing more than a regular driver's license, and they need full training. Some come with a CDL, but they need special endorsements in order to transport our students. And on average, that onboarding, training, certifying process takes three to four weeks, in many cases, after they've been hired in the district. So understand that there's a little more time built into that that we have little-to-no control over, but we have processes in place to try to do them as quickly as we can. Today, our team is bringing information and solutions that we hope will tell you what we're doing, how we're doing them, and we're open, obviously, to any ideas or suggestions that you may have, because we want to fill vacancies, and we want to be able to provide what our goal is and what our promise is. So the lady that is at the top of this, and has great wisdom, and has done it for many years, is the Director of Transportation, Rebecca Rora, and I want to turn it over to you.
Thank you. So throughout each year, we continue to monitor and review routes as they change daily. The changes will occur because of vacancies, because of long-term absences, and because of the mobility of our families as they move around. So adjustment is required throughout the year. Nothing has changed there. We are looking at that. We continue to make those changes by rerouting, combining, even dissolving with feasible, or repairing with schools, such as elementary with a high middle. We may have to change how that is paired based on what is feasible to do there. But what I would like to move into is we have ongoing, but it has increased our effort of recruiting. And for these reasons, we're recruiting more aggressively to fill these vacancies. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Christians. He's going to share how we're doing that through advertisements.
Good morning to each of you. Since this topic surfaced last Thursday morning at your work session, we've gotten quite a bit of media interest in our plight, and I want to just share a little bit with you. Ms. Rora said advertising, now in the PR world, Mrs. Campbell will recognize this, advertising means we spend money for guaranteed placement. We're not advertising for what I'm talking about, but she will share information about that. NPR out of Orlando, which is WMFE, covered the story and shared our dire need for bus drivers. WCJB-TV 20 came down, and Monday did a story with Ms. Rora and our need for bus drivers. Of course, the Star Banner, Joe Callahan, did a great story that included not only our COVID update, but the impact that COVID is having on our bus driver situation. The Ocala Gazette also, which is the new weekly newspaper here in town, has shared information about our dire need for bus drivers. And we even got statewide attention through the Tampa Bay Times Education Roundup, which came out a couple days ago. I don't know if you guys get that, but it's a great option, because it takes headlines that are education-related from around the state and puts them all in one place. So we got state exposure with that. So the media, in their job of covering our issue, is actually helping spread the word for our need for bus drivers, and we don't have to pay for that, so that's a good thing. Some additional efforts that we're taking out of the Public Relations Office. Yesterday morning, I shared some marquee messages with our principals, because what's the one thing everybody looks at every time they go on campus? The school marquee. So we're asking principals, if they can, to share information there, and we're kind of theming that on the wheels on the bus go round and round, but only if there's a driver for that bus. So you may see that on some of your school campuses. I hope you will. We're also tweeting our need for bus drivers, and the dollar rate per hour, and guaranteed hours, and all those kinds of things. We tweeted yesterday morning. We've had over 1,600 impressions with that one tweet so far. Some of our schools and our principal accounts have also liked it and retweeted that, so we're getting a little bit of traction there. We're also rerunning, or we're looking at stories that we have done in Public Relations regarding bus driver, what a bus driver is, their responsibilities. The last story we did was in November of 19, so we're going to pull that story back out and see how we can update that with current practices and procedures, primarily masks and COVID-19 protocol, and we're going to share, update those video stories, and share those again. And then finally, and I hope I'm not stealing thunder here, I really like to be able to find a celebrity bus driver who can help us. There's nothing like a celebrity to endorse a product or a service, and we deliver a great service, but we need help with that. So I welcome your suggestions if you have connections. With all due respect, I'm looking for somebody that's really, really got some great notoriety in our community, and there's a handful of people who have that recognition. And if you have connections with those people, let's talk, because it wouldn't take much on their part to help us out, and we can make that happen. So that's some of what we're doing from the PR side of things. Any questions that I can address?
On the celebrity bus driver, are you looking for someone who has bus driving experience, or you're just wanting somebody to be a ride-along on one of our buses?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to put somebody behind the wheel, and they don't necessarily have to have a CDL. We can help them get a CDL, can't we, Ms. Rora? And that would be fun in the process if we could actually help them earn that. Not that they would do anything with that, but, you know, a celebrity attracts attention, and we're thinking outside the box here, and we've got some celebrities in town that I think could help bring a bigger spotlight to our need.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. So while we returned from winter break, we lost several drivers throughout the break, unexpectedly, that made decisions that was best for them and their families not to return. So that really put a damper on things and put us further behind the eight ball. So in moving forward and not sitting there waddling in our despair, we amped up our efforts again, and we reached out and partnered with Career Source. We did some postings on other avenues, a site called Indeed, because we had a posting out there for bus drivers, and it stayed empty without any applicants for almost a week. We kept looking. It's like, where are the applicants? It's just everything died down. So through the efforts of, the next person that I'm bringing before you is Stephanie Standridge. She's our recruiter, driver trainer, Mrs. McCall, and she's going to share with you what we have coming up, and we're very excited about, is the job fair and some other things that we put in place.
Good morning. We are currently partnering with Career Source to have a job fair, tentatively the week of February the 15th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. It will be by appointment only, and only for applicants at a time due to COVID. Career Source has also posted on EmployeeFlorida.com and Facebook. I have posted a job announcement on Indeed, and in one week, we had 29 candidates that applied. We are getting a lot of qualified applicants from this source. I have also interviewed eight people in the past couple of days, and hope this will move us in a positive direction. And that's what we've done thus far.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Well, everybody gets it. What's the reason, I know COVID is one, but what's the reason for the high turnover? I know historically, nationwide, is it, but are we competitive with other districts? What is, I mean, what is it?
Yes, so we are still competitive with other districts, but what we've seen lately is individuals who are going home to take care of an elderly parent or sibling. We've seen those who have underlying health conditions. Just this week, I've lost two to that because they have underlying health conditions. Some who have experienced COVID tried to come back to work, and the lingering effects is fearful.
Are you hearing from those folk that are in those high-risk groups? Are they wanting to take vaccines and not being accessible to the vaccines? Or is there anything that we can help? I know we've talked about Mr. Lander's doing that. I mean, maybe those are some of the things that we can start trying to push out there to kind of slow this down, especially for those drivers who are, who fit the criteria, moving them to priority. We talked about them being essential, us being frontline workers. That could be something that we need to really, really push. I know we got a ladder coming out today, but that may be something that we need to really kind of amp up on, just to slow that thing down.
Yes, Mr. Clem, that would be great. I know that some of the employees, office staff, and drivers, they have been trying to sign up for the, to get the vaccines. I've had at least one in the office that has received the vaccine, but it is difficult. Some are trying to, right now, sign up their parents, and the list is filled up within an hour.
Yeah.
So it's very difficult.
COVID is closing like 10:30.
Absolutely.
And the health department has a 50,000 name backlog. I'm going to suggest, Dr. Gullett, and I'm just suggesting, that as we kind of have that conversation with Mark Lander, and instead of trying to get those, our 65 and older, especially our bus drivers, because they're front, maybe go to the compound and administer those vaccination shots, and try to see if we can make some of those priority, because if they're in that age group, they are, according to the executive order, they should be able to get the shot.
Yes.
So Ms. Rora, my question to that would be, how many of your high-risk drivers are actually in that age group, and what is the possibility, if we've got some in their 50s, how can we get them in too? So I would just be curious of those that are at that high risk, because I think that it's crucial that we get everybody that's high-risk in, as bus drivers, vaccinated.
Right, and we need to, it's almost, we're in a position now of looking at triaging our priorities. We know that everyone is a priority, and then in what order and sequence do we begin to do this? Because no one can argue that transportation is the root of everything that we do, and everything flows out from there. If the kids aren't arriving to school on time, that affects instruction. If they're getting home late, or that affects the home life. So this is something, and it is such a tradition here in Marion County Public Schools, within our own departments, we put our heads down. We work. We solve our own problems, you know? And you guys have been doing that for years. We've worked closely together for so many years. And so it's so, so important for transportation to understand, you know, that we love you, we need you, and we want to support you. And that is the bottom line, and it's very encouraging to hear about the recruitment news that you shared. I'm hoping that I'm going to hear more about retention.
That's what I was going to ask.
Efforts.
Are you going to talk a little bit about retention efforts?
Yes.
I figured you would, and I think it is important for us to know for this conversation, how many drivers are we down currently? And I know that fluctuates depending on the day. And also, what is their actual total compensation package, including insurance? Because I know a lot of our drivers, they're retired, and they drive to get their insurance, which is important.
Can I add something to?
And I'd like to know if that's competitive.
Can I add something to what you were just asking for? Are there any incentives, signing incentives? I know employers would do some type of signing bonus or something to get folk on, and they have to kind of commit for a certain timeframe. Do we have any things like that in place?
Okay, so first, yes, thank you, Mrs. Rora, for thanking us for our continued efforts. Ms. McCall, the numbers that you asked for concerning the high-risk and age group, we'll get that for you.
Okay.
So Mr. Clem, concerning the signing incentive, we don't have one in the area that I think you're speaking of, but what we do, that some of the districts don't do, is we pay those coming on for all the training that they do with their success for coming aboard. Once they do all their training, and they're hired on, in that first or second check, depending on how quickly payroll gets that out, they are compensated for every hour that they have gone through training. That's not offered at a lot of the districts. At a recent director's conference, some of the districts require that they already come with that CDL, P and S endorsement in hand. They do no training. They just hire for those who are completely certified. So that within itself is a positive incentive, and then it helps to offset some of the expenditures that they have to do as it relates to fingerprint, background check, and the required 20-hour online course, which is $40. So compensating them for the training offsets some of that.
So there is an incentive?
Yes.
Do we advertise that?
Yes.
Do we do anything after like 90 days? Is there any type of bonus or anything in place? Because if we can keep them for 90 days, we may be able to keep them, right? Because don't we lose a lot of our drivers within the first 90 days?
Correct, but that we don't have, and that's.
So we might want to look at.
Retention bonus.
A retention bonus of some type after they've been with us for 90 days. That might, that might help keep them. And so I think if we can keep them for 90 days, unless they have an unusual circumstance, we may be able to keep them longer. Because when I've had the conversation with Ms. Rora, it's those first few weeks, and so if we can give them some incentives and some arm pumps moving them in, and I don't know that that's feasible, I know we have talked to Ms. Boston Ellis about that, but I'm just thinking down the road that that might help us keep those bus drivers. Don't know, but it might be worth.
Well, it's definitely worthy of discussion, because this is something that is a systemic opportunity to further problem solve, and that is, is that when new drivers come onboard, the veteran drivers know which routes not to bid on. Let's just put it out there. And so then the new drivers end up with the most challenging routes. And in my visits to compounds and speaking with drivers, something that they brought up, they said, in terms of, we were talking around retention, and they said, you know, these new drivers would be a lot less nervous if they had an aide on their bus, especially the first month or the first six weeks. And if that could be something that we think about, just making a procedure, that any new bus driver gets an aide for the first however long, and if the bus is going well and everything is calm, then that aide can transition off that bus and go on to another bus. My understanding is, is that we're hurting a lot more for drivers right now than we are for aides. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So that makes it a little bit easier. That's a bit of a bright spot. But that is so important, and we see this in the classroom too, that new teachers, a lot of times, end up in the most challenging classrooms, because those are the classrooms that are the most difficult to stop. And we lose them quickly, and they're good people, but they just need support, especially through that first 90 days, because then they know their routes, they get to know the kids, they've established their expectations on their bus, they have support. So that could be something powerful.
Wasn't there, wasn't there something where they, perfect attendance? Wasn't there like a perfect attendance?
Perfect attendance for first semester and second semester is still there.
Yes.
Did they get a bonus after the first semester there was perfect attendance? A bonus or something?
$2.50 per semester.
Is that still in place?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rora, how many?
Don't come in if you're sick.
Right, right, right.
I was going to say, what is the number of bus drivers that have had to leave because of quarantine? I would be really interested in, they haven't left the job, but they're quarantined for 14 days. How many of those do we have, and how are, what are we doing to fill those spots? But I would, I would be very interested in knowing what that number is, because that could have a significant impact on what you're trying to do, is if you've got three or four bus drivers out because they were associated with somebody, and now because of contact tracing, they have to be out for 14 days. It would just help to see the numbers and see, you know.
Okay, yes.
Where we are with that, because that's got to be a huge challenge for you.
Correctly. I'll get that number for you. I think the worst we had so far is one driver pushed out nine employees, two being a bus aide, and seven being drivers.
Wow.
So that's really significant, and that was hurtful.
And this is really tough. This is really tough, because drivers don't want to call out. They're very, very dedicated, and it is heartbreaking for them. They don't want to drive past a group of kids that are waiting by the side of the road, you know, because everything is running late. And there were 23 routes that needed to be covered just this past Monday afternoon out of Zone 3, and I witnessed all of it, and I cannot acknowledge enough how these folks that are left are just, my goodness, you know, what they are going through to try to make it all happen. And on the technology side, they were sharing that the Skylark message are sometimes lagging, and maybe it's because the system is overloaded, so I don't know if that's something that could be checked and further, you know, problem solved, because that messes up the parents if the message is incorrect, and then they take the kids home, and then the kids don't come to school. So, you know, this is the depth of it, and this is a pandemic. This is the definition of a pandemic, and so it's just exacerbated what y'all have always been struggling with and just continuing to make it happen.
Yes, and Kevin, you look into that, right? Kevin will look into that concerning the Skylark. So as we move forward and share other efforts, I'd like to share for your consideration.
Ms. Rora, sorry to interrupt you. Ms. King did have something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's usually quiet, and then she's ready to say something.
I was just listening, because I agree, what we have right now is what I call a code red. We are in crisis mode right now with our school bus and our situation. I've heard a few different things that we've discussed. You mentioned that we had nine bus drivers that couldn't, is it because they were like maybe sharing the same portable, and that's how they were exposed? Or was it just different incidences of them being exposed by their family or students?
That was sharing directly on our compound, because they congregated around the table.
So I wonder if a good suggestion may be, during the time, not saying this is permanent, but again, we're in a code red, would it be feasible for the bus drivers to drive their routes but not all be in a confined portable in the same area sharing? Because if they weren't in that same portable, we wouldn't have nine bus drivers out right now. Is that feasible, or something that we could do?
Yes, it is, and you're correct. What we encourage them is to come in, get your key, get the messages out your box, and move on to your route. What happened on that particular day, it was in the midday after routes and everything was over, the young lady returned to the compound at the portable, and the portable is not attached to the office staff. It's around back, so they were in there together. And once we noticed it and was aware of it, we asked her to leave, but at that moment, she had already, absolutely.
So maybe right now, while we are in, you know, pandemic, high numbers and stuff, maybe we're just going to really have to stress that. maybe we're just going to really have to stress that. Like there is absolutely, under no circumstances, you know, or something. Maybe we can think of ways to triage that.
Congregation in the portables.
Right, well, they also have to clock in and clock out, yeah.
Keep moving, yes.
Yeah, but there may be, maybe there's even somewhere, I mean, there could be staggered, there could be someone there. Like, there's got to be ways that we got to be able to think out of this box and problem solve. Because there's things that we've always done, but right now, that's not working. And we're just going to have to adapt and change constantly. If we've learned anything this year, that's what we're doing. We're adapting and changing.
Okay, that's a good point. Can I ask a question while we're there?
Yes.
Can we just go ahead, because I've been in those portables in the morning, can we just go ahead and move the tables and stuff out of those portables? That reduces the one to sit down and have a cup of coffee and drink doughnuts. Because that's what I've seen when I've been in the portables in the morning. And they kind of hang around and talk before they get on the bus. If we, there's no tables or chairs in there, they'll go in and clock in their stuff and go to the bus and keep it moving.
We'll consider that. And we did limit some of the sitting spaces at a couple of the locations. So I will go out and get my coordinators to help me visit each site so we can see what setup we have. The reason I say we limited it and did not remove it all is because they're still required to do paperwork or to turn in, to get some things done, update seating charts and such. So, but we will revisit that. We will continue to encourage them not to congregate. I'll get my staff to do a better job of monitoring that after we think they're all gone. We got to get up and go periodically check to monitor.
Rather than big tables, because they do have to do their writing and so on, maybe those cubicle-type desks, like we've been doing, trying to do in the classrooms. You know, just distance them out in there and try to limit the number of people that are in there at any one time. Because you got to give them a place to sit down. And I was thinking, well, maybe we could put some picnic tables outside. But if it's raining or freezing cold, then, you know, I mean, on a nice day, that's a great alternative. Please go outside, let the wind blow this away. But we don't want to remove, eliminate things from them and make their job harder. We want to make accommodations.
That becomes a retention issue.
Exactly.
We start taking things away that they're familiar with. And while we understand the challenges we're dealing with in a pandemic, also, some of them have relationships that, you know, let's just maybe say, talk for 10 minutes so you don't have to be excluded.
Right now, talking to someone for 10 minutes, they can catch COVID, and then they go home sick.
Understood if we are keeping six feet social distance to have a conversation for 10 minutes. Just following the CDC guidelines, absolutely. But we also want to ensure that we're not completely taking away all the purposes of why they're enjoying what they're doing as a professional. That, moving on, the other things I want to say was, first of all, is the career source. Thank you so much for what you're doing with posting jobs on Indeed. Because if we're looking for people outside of the district, then we absolutely need to be doing that. And so I'm grateful that that was successful. The only other thing that I was curious about was, are we also working with MTC, like to promote it for their students that are going through CDL already, that we're actually recruiting from within? Because we do have full classes, and I saw on their board that they have another class starting just in like a week or two. And so if we are promoting to the students who are already going through the CDL program, hey, by the way, this is a guaranteed job. If you come over and we'll pay you while you're being trained. I don't know if we're doing that at all. And so then the other thing that I was going to say on that, and I didn't mean to cut you off, Ms. King. I understand that we are in a pandemic, and I understand that all of the severity of ensuring that we do have drivers who are working and coming to work and all. But there also are elements of retention that I don't want to send just another driver over the edge to say, okay, well, you're taking away my eating space. That's it, I'm done. And I'm not saying that that would do it. I just, I wanted to make sure that we're not taking away something. If we're wanting to try and limit their ability to eat together or limit, not even offer coffee, I'm not certain. I have not been out there, but again.
I assure you, I will do that with care. I will visit, though, each site, me and the coordinators, and we will make sure. But what we've been encouraging them to do is to keep it moving, guys. Let's clock in, grab your key, let's keep it moving. Let's move outside because outside, you're in the air, it's better spacing. So we've been encouraging that, but we will visit and we will make sure that we handle it with care.
Thank you, Ms. Rohr, there's no doubt you will.
And as relates to the MTC, their classes are geared toward Class A truck driving, although the gentleman over there is certified to test Class B. But they are training for the Class A. And, but I will have Stephanie reach out to him to have a conversation in regard to.
Right, because when I met with Ms. Ramona Williams and I went from the city, because we're talking about potential opportunities to increase enrollment in those programs, I think they were talking about CDL-B classes as well. So just, just, again, if we have low-hanging fruit that are already in a class that's on our own campus, then if we can recruit from within, that'd be an opportunity for it.
We'll reach out to him. And I know that he does do the Class B testing, but it is at a cost for each endorsement.
And every one of these costs, so potentially, and this, again, might just be my naivety on not really understanding how some of these things might work. But is there opportunity for us, if we're looking for 90-day incentives or whatever kinds of bonuses, that we can actually go out in the community and seek sponsorships to say, you know, we could use this for assistance? Or we could use this to help cover the CDL-B classes as a scholarshiping for? I'm just really trying to get outside of the box on our thought processes and how we fund things. Because I do think that the community is starting to hear the outcry from the PR perspective. And while they may not have a desire to take a class or drive a bus, they may have a couple thousand dollars they might want to throw towards an incentive. I don't know if that's something we're even legally able to do, but that's my question.
All of these brainstorming ideas are that. And we want to put everything out there that could hopefully support you guys. It's, I hope that we'll continue to think in terms of making accommodations for our transportation employees so that they stay safe, stay healthy, and feel like we're doing everything we can for them. Ms. King, I think you had something else?
I did, I had more to say if we're done. Okay, again, I want to take us right back around. We're in code red, we're in crisis, we have empty school buses and students that aren't getting to school on time. So I want to revisit a couple of things. And actually, Mr. Christian, you talked about celebrities, like hometown celebrities or whatever. But actually, when you think about it, there are school celebrities. We have teachers, we have parapros, we have administrators, we have people already inside of our district that truly are the celebrities to our students. So not saying, and I'm just throwing this out there, and I know that the unions would have to probably revisit this and talk about that. But maybe some options that we could also look at is, would any of our teachers, would any of our paras, would any of our District East, would any of our mechanics, would any of our, anyone in our district, you know, for a stipend? Not saying just go out there and hop on a bus and take the training. But is there anybody inside of our schools that has any interest of helping us pull this weight? And if you think about it, a teacher could run their bus route, take the students to school, bring them in, you know, and then leave. I'm just trying to figure out ways to get our students to school on time. Because when they're arriving two hours late, they're losing instruction when they're sitting on their, on a bus too long. And it's also a safety hazard when, you know, our bus drivers who, right now, they're exhausted. They're exhausted, they've been working so hard for a very long time. They're, they need, we need help, right? They need help, they need our support, we need defined solutions. Also, I think it's my understanding that maybe even some of our bus aides may already know how to drive a bus. Maybe a parapro or teacher could hop on the school bus with them those days or something. Just until
To be the para.
To be the para, in case they don't want to drive a bus. Maybe they could help be the aide on the bus. And I think you've mentioned that before. So the goal right now is like in retention and hiring, that's all great on the grand scheme. But right now, it's like, how do we focus and where do we narrow? And I also want to just remind us, and I understand it's tough times, but there's no way that we're ever going to be able to manage our way out of secrets. So we need to just, everything that's going on, and we might want not people to know or understand, we're not ever going to manage our way out of secrets. And we need to be open, and we need to make sure that we're safe for everyone. And that's my thoughts and my ideas. I'll sit back and let you guys do what you need to do.
Yes, go ahead, I didn't mean to.
No, you're fine.
This has got to be a phased approach because we know recruitment is important, we know retention is important, and now we need to focus also on immediate relief. What can we do immediately, like today, to help reduce the load on you guys? And one of the things I'm thinking about, this is the parent perspective. From the beginning of the school year, we encourage parents, if they could, to take the stress off the buses, to please transport their kids to school, create bubble car pools, and reduce the impact on transportation. We are there, you know, we have more kids come back in school now. But on the parent's side of things, and if Dennis is around, this could be helpful from him too, as far as traffic patterns and so on. Because from the parent perspective, there are parents that are doing that, they're carpooling. But what they're finding is, is that the car lines are getting just ridiculous. So it's making them late to work, it's making their kids late, like if you have multiple kids going to multiple schools. And I know sometimes schools, if you talk to people at the schools, they'll say, well, there's this little used back driveway, you know, where we can roll people through, and then they can avoid a busy intersection. I don't know if law enforcement can help us during those critical times to direct traffic, to just get them moving. If we're going to ask for the community's support, and we're going to ask parents to please consider trying to do this, this is a code red. This is an all-hands-on-deck. And so if we're going to make that plea to the community, we have to think about what that is going to make it look like for them and do everything we can to smooth that way.
Ms. Rohr, could we maybe look, ask the principals to really look at their bell times? And is there a way to stagger drop-off per grade, maybe K through 2?
All kinds of opportunities.
I mean, I think that, because I, I mean, I even sit in Forest High School car line last week to pick up my grandson, and I was in that car line for 25 minutes.
Oh, Howard Middle School?
Yeah.
Before pandemic.
And Bellevue Middle School. I mean, they're all, they're all the same way. Unfortunately, we don't have the, you know, but there has to be, and I think this is an effort on everybody's part because we are in crisis situation. What can we do to eliminate those long car lines, even, even at the end of the day?
Getting and end.
Yeah, so is there a way to stagger when we drop off kids? And I don't know, but at this
That's going to be individualized to get school.
That's why I'd say we need to, Dr. Gullett, really look at the principals and see if they can be creative.
Are you asking to stagger the drop-off times or the start times?
Well, it may, I think, I think the principals need to kind of look to see. I don't know, Eric, I just think maybe they can be creative. You know, these, our principals and their staff are incredibly creative. Look what they did with getting food out and stuff for the kids.
Traffic patterns in the hallways and making all those adjustments.
And every school is so unique with drop-off. So I'm just saying, maybe we just ask them to look and see.
And the reason I ask start times or drop-off times is because I'm sure we can kind of gauge whether it being, how late they are to school. And it may be a simple adjustment with the start times.
Like we did with Oak Crest.
Yes, it may be, I'm not saying it's that simple, but it's something that we definitely need to consider. Because sometimes, depending on the school, it could be just that simple.
Even five to 10 minutes.
Correct, it could be just that simple.
Dr. Gullett? Madam Chair, thank you, members of the board, thank you. And Ms. King, to your point originally about the internal mechanisms and those that your colleagues are sharing, I would like to ask Ms. Rohr to provide some context. And we've had some of these conversations. And we, while we have not had the opportunity to work fully with the union yet, there are some opportunities in place that we have discussed. So Ms. Rohr, could you shed light on some of the things that we've discussed so far and some of those more immediate internal processes that can change to help us?
Okay, so on the process of bringing aboard for the employees that are currently on the school campuses that can assist with routes for students that serve their school. I know many of you are familiar with activity drivers. We have talked about that, there's more discussion to be had because it crosses two different unions. But it is something that is obtainable because we already certify them with a CDL, PNS endorsement. Because currently, they transport their teams, softball, football, especially the volleyball and the baseball teams because they leave much earlier when we're not yet done. So those are things that we are in. It requires a lot more discussion, but that could be quickly done. Say for our high schools specifically, the Dunellen High, Westport High. Westport High, who is really struggling with getting the children on campus on time. If they could pick up routes that we've identified for their students only, bringing them right back to the campus. That teacher that is teaching logistics who hold a CDL, who is currently transporting their sports teams here and there, could easily bring in a load of Lakewood High School students and then go into his classroom and teach. But again, that requires further endeavor. So we would love to continue that discussion at your direction. And we will get with the unions and all of the stakeholders to see what we can do to make that happen.
And how quickly can we
Absolutely.
have those conversations with the unions? And I mean, you know, sometimes that all bugs down and
Is there an urgency clause we can implement here that just allows an expedited conversation?
And another option that I would like for you to consider, which is something that we can do immediately, which would only require you to direct us to move forward, is that of temporary bus drivers. So when I speak of this, Ms. Barbara Dobbins is going to assist and tag-team me with this coming out of HR. But with what we currently have in language that we can readily use is hiring for a temporary bus driver at the hourly rate of $8.65. That is already in our language. That we can help, would help to fill the gap. To fill the gap of not only open routes, but those routes where the drivers are out on an FMLA or long-term illness or COVID. Bringing in that temporary person, which I have had people from the public, past employees, to inquire about would help us to fill that gap immediately. So not leaving anything on the table, I would love to move forward on that. But also, what I'd like for you to consider is utilizing that same mindset of a temporary driver, but asking if we can hire them at the hourly rate of $15.35, which is the entry level for a bus driver. That would be more appealing to the public. That will work for someone who is trying to keep their earned income at a minimum and give them the option to know that this is only, I could work for six months and then not inquire the income that would put me in a bad spot at the end of the year. We've looked at many options of utilizing this temporary person. Say that they are tag-teamed, which I've had two sisters who retired, who introduced this and said they're ready to come back if my sister could drive the AM and I do the PM of a route, five days a week.
Perfect. Because retirees don't want to get up that early anymore.
What's the salary again, $15.?
$15.35 is the entry level that would require a little more legwork, but is not unreasonable. Barb is going to share what we currently have.
What those positions require benefits?
So what, I was provided with the number of positions, 20 positions, temporary, an hour rate of 18, I mean, an hour rate of 889, which includes the fringe, and that was for the $8.65, which we currently have in place. If they worked at least four hours a day, 71 days, starting in February the 7th, would be $50,495.20. Now, if you consider that and double a little more if we went with the $15.35.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing you say is that the temporary drivers would be able to get insurance, or not. What is this fringe? I know, but what is this fringe you're talking about?
This fringe, we still have to pay, is the
Is the social security.
Social Security medical.
And also the workman comp. So there is no health insurance when you are a temporary or part-time employee.
Okay, again, this being a pandemic, would we be able to at least ensure that they could get, you know, COVID tested or some other kind of support? And you guys can talk about this. I know we're on, on a timeline. But, but I, I feel like what I'm hearing from this board is that anything that is going to help you, that Teresa Boston Ellis says we can afford, let's do it. Is that what I'm hearing? That is safe, that's legal?
Legal.
We would also have to look at our health insurance plan and to be insured that our policy covers part-time.
Right, because we're self-insured now.
So that would expand out to risk management to navigate that. But we do know that it would cover the workman comp and the social security that we have to do for fringe. So right now, what Ms. Rohr is speaking of is currently you have approved a temporary salary schedule. Let me rephrase that. You have approved a salary schedule for temporary employees. That's already board-approved, but that's minimum wage. So we want to move forward with approving the increase to that $15.35, which is equal to the entry level of bus drivers. Then I would like to turn to attorney Powers because we can do that. I can bring you a new salary schedule on the February 23rd board meeting, but that's going to delay us. And I'm not sure if we can come to consensus today. Can we go ahead and move forward and advertise those temporary positions at that 15.35 without yet the official board approval?
I do not believe that we can.
Okay.
So I, I think that.
Go ahead, let him talk.
Have to go through board.
Okay, what would be the way to expedite this? And is to, I expect that Teresa's been involved in these conversations and we can afford it. This is one of those situations where we can't afford not to do something, my humble opinion.
If however fast we can get it done, we do emergency meeting.
Absolutely.
Yes, we, we can do, we can call it a special meeting. Emergency meeting has specific criteria. We'll call it a special meeting. And we're required to give 48 to 72 hours notice. We'll do so.
Perfect.
How soon can we get the paperwork done?
Where do we sign?
Within an hour. So I can on my part, then you have the board docs piece with Elena. But you set the time and the date, and I'm sure we can, we will work to get it done.
I need to hear from Teresa on some of this stuff, too.
Yep, we've got to be mindful of our time here.
Boston Ellis to come out and, and talk, if we can. She's in the other room. And, and Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Boston Ellis has been in these conversations. We've had these internally to discuss what these options could be and, and moving forward. So that's the partnering that it takes?
You guys are amazing. You've always been amazing. How you resequence routes to accommodate individual students, how you change routes. You know, you've just been quietly doing your thing all these years and, but it gets to a point. When we're in a pandemic, crisis, code red situation, it's all hands on deck, whatever we can do.
Ms. Rohr, would be, if, if this works during the pandemic, what, what is the process? Because we know that, that it's not nearly as critical just during the regular school year when we're not.
It's pretty critical.
But, but what is the possibility of, of these temporary drivers? If we do have a driver out for a while, can we keep this in place?
Like a substitute driver?
Right.
A permanent substitute.
Mr. Leopard?
One of the things that Reverend Cummings brought up just a little bit ago is that how are we incentivizing this? And Becky already spoke to it, that they do get paid compensated for the time that they're in training, which is a big advantage. Another piece of that is the cost of the training is never assessed to them. We cover that on the district, so there's two pieces to that. They're getting an expensive training provided to them, the CDL, the endorsements that are necessary, and they're getting compensated for the time they're spending in class to get that done. I think this, this, what we're talking about, the incentive of maybe raising that temporary rate for temporary drivers is a huge incentive, especially to that group of drivers who were great drivers for us, have gotten past the FRS period of time where they really couldn't run the risk of losing any benefits they have. But they still have it in them and want to drive and want to serve the students. But maybe not in a, maybe not in a permanent capacity. They want to be that spot filler and like a substitute teacher where they, we have lots of teachers that come back in our classrooms to substitute because they can kind of pick their days and times and what they're doing. This would allow that sort of thing with being an incentivized type thing. Because to come back at minimum wage is a little bit of a challenge there as well, if we can afford it.
Slap in the face with all that experience.
So I think the incentive you touched on, Reverend Cummings, is something that we've been trying to keep. What's going to make them want to come back and to help us fill the gaps? And we're trying to think outside the box. Becky has been to statewide transportation organizations. Everybody is facing these same challenges. They're all trying to come up with other solutions. And I think we're actually exploring some areas that we could make an impact. So I thank you all for your, for the discussions we've had.
We're going to do it. All right, Ms. Boston Ellis.
Temporary employees at 15.35 are no health benefits. Are we calling them temporary and they're going to end June 30th? So we have to go with the temporary status, and they have to end June 30th, and it is going to be changed in the salary schedule? Right. If it's more than six months and it is an existing position, we would have to increase the different types of benefits that are allowable. But if we make the changes, we would be liable for the worker's comp as well as the Medicaid piece. Beyond the six months? If it goes beyond six months, we have to add retirement to it.
Right, right.
But if we're calling this a temporary position, and it is on the salary schedule as a temporary position, and they have a beginning and an end date for this fiscal year, then that would be the limitation of the benefits unless this is something you want to provide.
Let me ask a question. Can it be done at six-month increments?
No, sir.
We can only do it?
Labor law looks at the length of time you work, so it can cross years. So we have, we've had people where we said they were short-term, and because they worked more than six months, we've had to go back and apply FRS to them.
And if they've already retired in the FRS system?
They have to be careful about that and make sure they come in and talk to risk management, Irene or Holly Sattler and payroll.
They have to have been out, what, one year?
If they went through drop.
If they went through drop.
Right.
If they are, if they come back in as a temporary employee and they're already on FRS because they've retired, if they are temporary longer than six months, do we have to pay into their FRS again?
Yes, I believe we have to pay it even though they would not have the advantage of FRS. But we would have to pay into FRS on their behalf. The same thing with any employee that goes out and comes back. We do. We have to pay the FRS even though they're not going to benefit from it.
But they couldn't re-vest?
No, sir.
No.
Okay.
No revesting.
We, we are paying their portion to the fund, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
And so the cost difference that we were discussing, because we're changing it from the $8 to the 15.35, that cost difference, did you say was $50,000? Is that what?
No, I, I calculated that in the office. It's about $125,000.
Okay.
If we're using hiring 20 bus drivers at four hours with that 15.35 rate. So it, it would be probably about two times more.
Okay.
But again, I don't know if they're going to work more than four hours. I don't know if they're going to work less, so that's.
Some of our temporary folks would be taking the place potentially of vacancies, so the cost differential.
Exactly.
I'm sure you calculated that as part of the.
I mean, we've, I heard you discussing this, and yes, we have quite a few vacancies. And it would not be an additional cost to the district as long as we maintain that it is a temporary position. And hopefully, at the end of that, they'll be interested in applying for a full-time position. Because I think your intent is to continue to fill those vacancies. Because.
Ms. Boston Ellis, let me ask you this. Let's say specifically for right now, we have bus drivers that are out. They haven't left, but they're quarantined for 14 days. So can we get a temporary driver for those 14 days? And then, then let's say they don't drive again in a temporary situation for another two months. So cumulatively, help me out here. So cumulatively, do they have to, does that six months, is it cumulative or?
Or calendar?
I, I'm just trying to think.
Actual work hours.
Yeah, or is it actual work, you know?
Yes, months, work months.
Actual work days.
I would have to talk to Becky Gideon about that. That's a little tricky. But I, I don't think we want to do that. I don't think we want to have somebody work two months, not work two months. I think if we know we're going to continually use them for more than six months, we need to go ahead and start paying, paying that retirement.
Right, right. But people like to step up in a crisis, too. And I can totally see some retired bus drivers saying, "Sure, I'll jump in and help get you over this hump, and then I'll be happy to go back or only drive, you know, a PM route to help you guys out when you needed," things like that. Is that possible?
To address your question, we can afford it because we have so many vacancies.
Okay, okay.
If that's what you're asking.
Yes.
The logistics will have to work out.
Right.
But we can afford it because we have a lot of vacancies.
Okay.
Potentially it's cost neutral.
Yeah, at least. And maybe we could create a substitute driver pool so that, you know, that are willing to pick up at least a PM route, and then a regular driver would only be doing a route and a half rather than two routes or something.
So Madam Chair.
Many years ago, we used to have.
Yes.
Extra drivers. I think it was 10 to 15 that were unassigned drivers. That's correct. And they were full-time, unassigned drivers, and they just went wherever they needed. But I think our issue now is really just trying to fill the positions that have been allocated.
Yes, ma'am.
So Madam Chair, I want to recommend that we go ahead and, and go forward with this temporary driver thing. Get the documentation corrected through legal and everything else, and then that we have a special session as soon as possible. Because we got to stop the bleeding.
Right.
We got to stop the bleeding.
Need a tourniquet. Mr. Leopard?
Please understand that this, this certainly would incentivize, incentivize what's going on. But I, and I won't speak to what the union's role is, but as your chief negotiator, I know we have prohibitive language about temporary employment beyond a year, which falls in line with what is needed as far as temporary positions. So know that there would have to be a renewal or something for somebody to stay in that status. And it would not be the intent of the district that these people would have any of the regular bidding or owning rights of routes. They would only be the place fillers or positions that are already there. I just wanted to be very clear about this.
Right.
These are the Band-Aid support that we need in order to fill that. It is not any intent for it to be a replacement of current roles.
Yep, agreed. Okay, as, as a board, we have consensus to move forward, move forward swiftly and prudently. And as soon as we can get it on an agenda, let's do it.
Thank you.
And, and may I say, with the understanding that, that we really look at some of the other suggestions that we, we have for retention, especially maybe that 90-day bonus down the road. I don't even know that that's feasible, but, but I would like to continue to explore the recruitment efforts. I love that you're working with CLM, but I, I really think that retention piece of it, you know how I feel about that, Ms. Rohr. We've had that conversation before. I really think that retention piece has got to be thought of.
And it's, and that, I think, centers around support. You know, if we support our new folks and get them confident, then they'll stay. Looking at February 4th, right now, there's only one item on the agenda for the work session. So we could do that special meeting right before.
When?
February 4th. It's already, should be in our calendars.
Next. Thursday?
Yeah.
Special meeting at 8:30 or 8 o'clock or?
I think that we could do it very quickly. Let's do, we could do it at 8:30. I don't think it would take any more time than that, right?
I, you know, I, I know we're here on Thursday, but if we can get this done quicker.
Or quicker.
If we have a special meeting.
But she's got to advertise. That's the thing.
But if we, if she gets that in today, what, what is the earliest that we could do it? If Ms. Dobbins gets into you what you need.
And what about Mr. Powers, too?
I mean, is.
We want to rush this, but we don't want to mess it up.
Don't the advertising hours change?
Yes, 24 to 28.
Yeah, we, we've got a minimum of 48 hours, 72 in some.
Can we do it Tuesday?
That's what I was thinking, Tuesday, strictly just for this.
Just for this.
I mean, that, then, you know, then they can start plugging those holes on Wednesday.
9 o'clock? February 2nd?
It is Groundhog Day. We're not planning on taking that off, right?
We're not taking.
Does that give everybody?
We're not going to be repeating anything after.
Does that give everybody the time they need if we do it February 2nd?
Sounds good to me.
Ms. Dobbins?
As far as HR's concerned, I'll have all the paperwork done in time. I'll have it done today. It's just setting up the meeting and, and our board docs and all of that, so.
And I, I do need a little clarity on what it is that legal needs to be looking into on, on this issue, so.
It really, really, yeah, and there is nothing, all I'm bringing to you is that one sheet of paper that is the salary schedule for temporary employees. It'll have crossed out the $8, and actually, it's still at 35 because we haven't, we've rolled the minimum wage. It'll be crossed out, redlined, and then the new insertion of $15.35 will be placed there. You approve it, we're done.
Okay, so February 2nd, what time? 9:00 AM.
So is that, is that enough time? Is it 24 to 48 hours?
48 hours. In some circumstances, it can be 72, but we generally need 48 hours. We've got it.
Does Saturday and Sunday count in those 48 hours?
Yes, as long as it's published within the largest paper circulation, which we're fine.
We'll trust that the, the folks that have the more detailed expertise will be getting together to make all of this work. Dr. Gullett, is there anything else you had?
No, that concludes our presentation, and we look forward to discussing this on February 2nd at 9:00 AM.
Fantastic. All right, thank you so much, everyone. We're going to adjourn now at 10:07 AM. Oh, sorry. Is there any public comment?
There was some.
Reopen the meeting.
Oh, reopen the meeting at 10:07 AM for public comment. I apologize.
It's okay, hon. And you know, my name is Diane Winegard, W-I-N-E-G-A-R-D, Gil Box, 866 Fort McCoy, Florida. And I also represent the union for support services and bus drivers. And I had a nice little speech here, which you all have covered most of this. But the one thing I want to stress is the retention. And one of the things is that you can give all the bonuses that you want, but they need the support of somebody on that bus to help control the students. That's very, very important. Student management is very, very important. When you put a new person out there and they're 30 miles away from the school, it's, hey, it can be quite rough. If they had somebody that was with them, that would be a great plus. Another thing that I've talked to drivers, they're, they're exhausted.
Yes.
They're frustrated, and I am so pleased to hear some of the things that you guys have come. And I'm working closely with Becky because I need, they need, they need help. The one thing that I have a concern about is the quarantine. When you have a driver or office person that is positive, the quarantine needs to be followed strictly. The whole office in Zone 3 was out. And in far as I'm concerned, that office should have been shut down. The driver should have just went to their bus and do their route. And I think that might be a good idea, is to keep them out of the portables. Because I know, being a bus driver, we love to, and we love to eat. And we all go out, and, and you know, I think we've gotten COVID complacent.
Yes.
You know, it's been here so long that you forget about the rules. And you don't realize how contagious this disease is. And not only the original COVID, but the two others that are coming behind it. And I'm very pleased that you consider this a code red, and please help my people.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I'm glad that you see.